All right. Could all stand for the life's loop?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Well, thank you all for coming. Start off with the consent agenda items, approval of the regular and special minutes, the regular meeting February 3rd, and approval of the special minutes February 10th.
Commissioner, I move to approve with typographical error correction February 3rd minutes and special meeting minutes of February 10th.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. She carries. Okay, action items A, B, and C, and D. D was added. Payment general fund vouchers, $12,583.83. D is one that was just submitted tonight, just a few minutes ago. B, payroll vouchers, $18,873.8. C, payment water fund vouchers, $742.59. And the one that was added, payment for general fund vouchers, $3,168.7. Those have a motion or this? You want to look at D?
Can I see D? What is D? Great, thank you. Commissioner, I move to approve the general fund vouchers, the payroll vouchers, water fund vouchers, and what was, is this a?
Yeah.
Okay, Ventec and Mason County Utility vouchers.
And the general fund, there would've been action item D?
Yeah.
Okay.
That too. One, sorry, the water.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioners report, who would like to go first?
Sure. Did February 3rd the regular port meeting, February 10th special meeting, February 11th Oyster House meeting, North Bay Historical Society, February 21st PRTPO meeting, that was at the airport. And just kind of for the good of the order, it was February 6th, I went through the DNR focus group meeting and just wanted to say a plug, they need volunteers a lot because of all the blowdowns from all the storms and everything for trails, as to Hooey Forest and Green Mountain as well. And if you need to volunteer, get ahold of Ray Minisch, coordinator of the Department of Natural Resources, and he's located at 3430 Sand Hill Road Veltair. North Mason Community Voice, February 24th, Jim Rothlin, the CEO of the Port of Bremerton spoke, and he gave a presentation that was really, really good. Thank you, Dietrich, for recording that for us as well, so that's on Mason Web TV if you want to see it. That's it.
CI did the February 3rd regular meeting, February 10th special meeting, EDC board meeting, did the EDC annual luncheon, the gala where Commissioner Scott won Citizen of the Year, and the North Mason Community Voice.
And I attended the regular meeting on February 3rd, the special meeting on February 10th. I also attended the EDC luncheon, and also attended the gala, congratulations, Judy. And that was it.
I was so excited, I forgot to mention that one.
You knew we wouldn't forget.
But thank you for your support, guys, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Security officer's report?
Travis Merrill, Port Security. About a week ago, we had a gentleman that locked his keys in his truck. Happens every now and then. Earl Eddings, the neighbor, kept him company. So, he was, no problems, no issues there. We still have the issue of the sunken boat out front, but DNR has been again notified as Leanne told me today, that we've sent them an email and such to try to find out what's going on. There is a marker on it, but it's still very, very visible at low tide. It's got something else. Always is something else. We do need to address our first aid carts. They are delinquent. That's, I guess, my department to remind everybody. And, it's pretty good?
Have we ever hosted a first aid training here?
Yeah, we did a first aid training a couple of years ago, it's just finally expired. We just need to take care of it. So, we're all up to date there.
Yeah, didn't we, somebody fired a fire truck down last week?
And, yes, there was something else. Last night, last night, the night before, several vehicles down here parked in an odd location, started taking pictures of them like I do, and these people came running off the dock, and we're like, "Well, what's going on?" They're like, "Oh, we're filming." Apparently, it's a North Mason High School Film Club thing that they were doing, and they just did it on the fly. They didn't actually think they were going to do it. They were going to do it in Bremerton, but they decided to use our facility because it was so quiet and nice and well lit, so we got some props there.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Executive Director's report?
All right, update to the comprehensive scheme. This was originally on the agenda for approval tonight, however, for some unknown reason, the Shelton Mason County Journal failed to publish required public notice. Because of the previous problem with this and the February 3rd public hearing that had to be postponed, Leanne sent it in early. We can't seem to get a reason why this problem continues to recur. When I spoke with the person in charge of public notices, made it a point to let them know, in no uncertain terms needs to be corrected. So, we're going to have to re-notice the public hearing and approval for next month. Meeting with state representatives, myself and our lobbyist Holly, had met with Representatives McEwen and Senator Sheldon on January 16th to discuss additional funding requests for the Oyster House. We also met with Representative Griffey on the 27th, and he asked if we had any $10,000 project, as he may be able to get that much in supplemental budget for us. We submitted a request for funding for grading and gravel for the parking lot where the Oyster House is going to be moved, as we expect the construction to create a bit of a problem. He later told us he put it in and it should be funded. Also had a meeting with Representatives McEwen and Senator Sheldon on the 25th of February, and they both said they would support the request, as did Senator Rolfes from, who's head of Ways and Means. So, we won't know for certain until the final budget is published, but it looks very promising. July meeting date change, 4th of July falls on Saturday prior to our regular Monday meeting. I had planned on taking some vacation time that week, and part of the week prior, had asked our chairman if calling in would be permissible on the scheduled date, and he suggested we just reschedule the meeting for the following week. This is on your agenda for discussion and possible action. Eric, community utilities proposal. Our loan application to the State Department of Health to purchase the Allen Carey Water System has been approved. There are some hoops we have to jump through, and we still need to negotiate the sale price in terms with Jeff Carey, but this is finally moving forward. Water system issues. We were recently notified by the Department of Ecology that construction of a new well should have been completed by March 1st. This came as a complete shock to us, but I, but it had been agreed to around 2005 or so in the water system plan previous to our 2018 plan. I requested a three-year extension on the deadline, telling Ecology that no one here now was part of the port when the original plan was approved, so we had no knowledge of the requirement to construct a new well. I've not heard back as to whether or not the extension request will be approved. When I received a letter from Ecology, I contacted both Northwest Water Systems, the consultant that wrote our current plan, and our water system manager Steve Holloway, and discussed it with them. They're both of the opinion the extension will be approved eventually if we jump through all the necessary hoops. However, as part of the extension approval, the Squaxon Tribe has to sign off on it. I spoke with the biologist from the Squaxon Tribe on Thursday and again today in reference to this, and she asked me a bunch of questions I couldn't even begin to answer. She did say the tribe doesn't want this approval process to be adversarial, and they're willing to work with us in any way that could be helpful. So, I forwarded her questions on to both Northwest Water Systems and Steve Holloway. Steve responded back saying this is way beyond his scope of knowledge. Doug Peel of Northwest Water responded that responding to this is going to be a somewhat large undertaking. They recommend the first thing we do is contract the, contact the hydrologists that originally worked on the water right, get them involved. I reached out to them on Friday and again today. Doug added that we could also have Northwest Water look into this and set up a meeting with us, them, and Ecology, and the Squaxon Tribe, and map out a plan of action. However, the more critical focus right now is the tribe and its concerns. Finally, he also noted that everyone will likely be charging us for their assistance. Ecology's main concern with our current well is saltwater intrusion due to its proximity to the bay, which is why the requirement for second well is in the original plan. We test regularly for that, have had no issues at all, which we made it a point to Ecology to make Ecology aware of in our request for the extension. The tribe is simply wanting to make sure Sherwood Creek is protected. At this point, we're exploring our options for moving forward, including finding grant funding for the new well, and/or possibly the acquisition of an adjacent system with approved well. The truth here is, I am way out of my depth on this project, and we're going to need help navigating this process, as well as finding the funds to do so, not to mention finding funds for a new well, which could be as much as a million dollars to drill.
Where's that number come from?
Uh, two different people have told me $5,000 a foot. This well is 245 feet deep. Where we have to drill it is up on the hill, so to get to the same depth as this, we're going to have the difference between here and whatever the difference to sea level is there.
Do you know what the depth of Eric's water system is?
It's not very deep, but it's not big enough to service our UGA. And that's what we have to do, we have to be able to service the entire UGA. My suggestion is to engage Kathleen Baranis to find us the money. She's very good at this kind of project, has long-established relationships with funding agencies, Ecology, and the tribe. It's on the agenda for discussion tonight. Security issues. As you know, we've been discussing installing high-resolution wireless remote cameras here at the park, as well as the Vid Canal Boat Launching Marina. We want a system that'll transmit images from multiple cameras in multiple locations, will store them in the cloud for any necessary law enforcement documentation. Commissioner Jackson and myself met with a potential vendor on January 15th and received a bid earlier this month. Was way out of our ballpark, which we expected, but she did have some suggestions for us to follow up on. Electrical issue. As reported last month, we're having a problem with the insulation of the electrical equipment for the transient mortgage facility. The main breaker keeps tripping, and there's no load on it. The electrical contractor's been out here and couldn't find a definite problem, but it appears that when the weather gets nasty, the pedestals will get wet from the waves splashing up over the dock, the ones on the southern side. They've shut the pedestals off, and it hasn't tripped since then. They're re-energizing the pedestals one by one to see if there's simply one that's defective, but haven't reached a conclusion yet. They have a guy who lives in Mason County, and he stops here every day monitoring it. But the weather issue seems, right now, to be the most likely problem. I'm also reaching out to the manufacturer to see if this is a known problem, and see if they have a fix for it. WPPA meeting schedules. Next up is a spring meeting, which is May 6th to 8th at Scumania Lodge, finance seminar is June 10th to 12th at Campbell's Resort in Shalane, the executive director seminar is July 9th and 10th at Alderbrook, and the commissioner seminar is July 21st and 22nd in Walla Walla at the Marcus Webber Hotel. Running out our new off, our small office, nothing new to report on that. Totem pole issue, James Kelsey and I are playing phone tags, and have been for a couple of weeks now, but still trying to find a date that works for both of us. Would you like me to do the old business report here?
Yes, please.
Okay, Oyster House. As you know, our current part of the project is to get the launch ramp removed and the pilings driven. You approved a contract with Art Anderson for all the engineering, design work, and bid document preparation for this of $52,590 last month. I'd asked him for a recommendation of a firm for the geotechnical report about the soils where the pilings need to be driven, and they recommended a firm they work with quite a bit, Prazen. I spoke with them, they're supposed to have a bid with us this week. The bid we got from EnviroTech was $6,800 and requires test pourings in the water. I believe that cost was somewhat high, as did Art Anderson and Bill Ray. Bill offered to talk to EnviroTech, but I haven't heard anything back. At any rate, we'll see how that bid compares with Prazen. Once design work is finished, we can proceed with the Army Corps of Engineers permit. Once we have that, we can begin the demolition, although because of the fish window, we will have to wait till July. But aside from getting those things ready to roll, we're in a holding pattern until we get the design work done and the core permit. Sweetwater Park, Joe Brogan has said the water rights issue is a red herring, and if the Salmon Center wants to do the water wheel, they'll have to coordinate with Ecology to apply for permission for non-consumptive use. That doesn't have anything to do with us, so I'm giving Joe the go-ahead to close. However, the easement issue may require a survey to find out exactly where that easement is located. Question is, will pay for that? Also, it's customary for the seller to pay for title insurance, but the school district is balking about that. We have to insure against the title issues, we'll have to pay the difference between the standard title policy and an enhanced one. That cost is estimated to be just shy of $800, which I told Joe we would pay. Staging area development, not much to report on this. I did turn in about $6,200 worth of reimbursements, but since only 75% will be reimbursed, we'll see a little over $4,800. I've begun looking for consultants to determine the amount of mitigation we need to do for things like hazardous material, and whoever else is required there. All ports meeting. When I was trying to organize another Mason County all ports meeting, I had contacted Wendy Smith from the Port of Shelton. After it was expressed to me, they decided they wanted to participate after all. She then told me she had a conversation with Sean Nye, Commissioner from the Port of Brownsville, excuse me, and he apparently invited all the Mason County ports to join their association. In a subsequent chat with Jack Bailey from Brownsville, he said Wendy and Christie Buck had attended one of their meetings, liked what they saw. Personally, I think this is a good idea, as their strength in numbers. You know, we've been a member of that for a couple of years now, and it's been beneficial. The next Kitsap all ports meeting is April 27th, which I will not be able to attend as I'm doing a presentation in North Mason Community Voice that night, unless that can be rescheduled.
Positive.
Any of you are welcome to attend, as commissioners are usually there as well. Transient mortgage expansion project. This project is essentially complete, but we do have some additional reimbursements to submit. I'd submitted a scope of work amendment form to our grant manager at Commerce to deal with the fire issue, and it's been approved. We asked Art Anderson and associates to work up an engineer's estimate, so we'll at least have an idea how much money we'll need, as well as get a clarification of exactly what we need to do. They contacted the fire marshal as in reviewing the code requirements. One question that would significantly impact costs is whether or not a sprinkler system is required for the dock. Art Anderson believes it is not required, and cited several code sections dealing with this in a note to the fire marshal. However, the fire marshal says if we do anything, we need to put sprinklers in, period. Scott's going to try and talk with him, see if there's an alternative or some kind of mitigation, or we can just do nothing. Criminalization of Marina rules, once we get the cameras in place, we can move forward on this. Until then, nothing's going to happen. That's my report.
Thank you. And regarding Marina rules, I'll reach out to Heidi and see if we can schedule a date. I know what she has in mind and what vendor we can use, so.
Okay.
Old business items, Sergeant Oyster House.
I already did it?
Yep. New business, discussion of the water system issues.
Yeah, we got a major problem on our hands with this.
Can we see about purchasing Eric's system and see if that will be enough first? Oh, well, it's not even enough. Okay.
So, in our old plan, I mean, I feel like this is not necessarily news to us, was it in our plan? I mean, it snuck up on us and we didn't do it, so.
Yeah. It was apparently in the 2005 plan, or whenever that plan was finalized, and, but it's very deep in it somewhere. And when I talked to Northwest Water, they were like, "Oh, yeah, I remember that."
I remember saltwater intrusion in the well at the park and having to dig a new well. I didn't know it was by March 1st of this year.
I didn't either, and that's the crux of this. If we can get the three-year extension, which I believe we're going to get, we can work our way through this, but, you know, how we do that is going to be the issue. I believe getting Kathleen to start looking for money for us is the best avenue that we have to get money and get the most amount of money.
Can we, sorry, can we schedule a second meeting this month?
Yeah, I'll call her tomorrow.
And then maybe get her here.
Well, that's what I think we need to have happen, let her explain our options, and we can ask her about some of the other stuff that we were interested in too, like brownfield cleanup and that sort of stuff.
My concern is just, everybody that we have to get involved is going to want to get paid. Where does that come from?
And that's the main question.
If we do get grants, it goes through, I mean, you know, the grants, usually the Brad Brothers got paid for that.
Yeah.
And I found out that was in the plan.
Yes, go ahead.
We had talked about just moving, having a one out there because the doctor had been laid out, they said, "Sorry, approved," so we're just moving it there, and he paid for a million dollars, moving it there, and then pumping it up with a thing. But they had already done it, I don't know if they'd still want it.
What they told me about that. I had said that, and what they told me was that would not work, that there's specific geographic areas that it can be located in, and both of them are across the street.
Yeah, things change all the time. The other place we did talk about was the White Homestead Road.
I didn't hear you.
The place that we did talk about at that point was Homestead Road, because it would serve everything in the whole UGA at the time.
Well, what I was thinking is, is if we get Jeff's system purchased, get that done, then maybe we can do something, that'll be a site, if nothing else, you know, we'll own the land that his well is on. The infrastructure, the power of the well is already there, and, you know, we could either drill his deeper and, you know, put a bigger casing on it, or, you know, we just drill a new well on that piece of property and just have them intertie. But, you know, I don't know what I don't know about this stuff. And I mean, that's kind of a handicap for me with this. I mean, it's a major learning process for me. So, I talked to the biologist from the tribe today, excuse me, and I'm trying to set up a meeting with her. If we can get Robinson Noble, the hydrologist that did the original plan, them and Northwest Water Systems, if we can set up a meeting between them, we can start mapping out a plan of action. And we don't really know what the tribe wants to do. You know, from what I understand, talking to a couple of different people, they just want reassurances that we're not messing up Sherwood Creek. And, but how we get that to them, I'm not really sure. You know, that's not knowing what I don't know, you know? So, what I'm trying to do is gather up the people that do know, and get them all in the same room at the same time, so we find out what we need to know and figure out a way to go about it. So, I see this as a two, two separate problems. One, dealing with the tribe and satisfying that and getting the extension done, and then finding the money to drill a new well.
Again, when we got the 300 acre feet of water, we had to go through the tribes, and they approved it then, that we could have two different well sizes now, and under that 300 acre feet, they approved both of those as not affecting Sherwood Creek at that time.
So, I.
Because the way they wrote it was the, and Robinson Noble did the original one, they, somebody else did, that they, because of the outfall, because of the recovered water from the sewer plant, I was one of the first in the state that they allowed to use that as offset for the water being taken out of the ground, because the sewer and everything goes right back in and goes to the plant up there, and that offsets what we were going to take out. But they did, the tribes did create two 300 acre feet.
Has she mentioned that to me? And, but again, that's kind of like, okay, whatever you say, because I don't know, but...
No, it's in the motion.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear back.
The first ones I worked with, I worked with them on getting the 300 acre feet of water rights. So, they would be the ones that would know to be able to tell the tribes and give them the powers.
And I think it would be who of us to have somebody from there at this meeting with the tribe.
And I agree with what you're saying. We spoke earlier, I agree that I'd like to sit down with the tribe, not only to educate us on how much water would they think that would be drawn out of that aquifer that would affect Sherwood Creek. I mean, I just don't know how somebody can measure that, but with the way Sherwood Creek is, but, and also develop that relationship with the tribe.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
And then also, I think, with meeting with Kathleen at the same time, so, and whether or not we want to schedule a second or special meeting and have them all here, or just schedule a meeting with the tribe separately and then...
I think doing that and having Kathleen here at a different meeting makes the most sense, whether it's a special meeting that we set this month or next month, regular meeting, either one, but...
If we were to do one this month, the 16th and 23rd, it's one for me. And that's one way to bring the tribal biologist in?
I can ask her. You know, I sent her an email today, and just, or I talked to her today, and she sent me an email back with some dates she'd be available, 16th is one of them.
Okay.
So, I'll talk to her tomorrow. I'll talk to everybody tomorrow. Let's tentatively set it for the 16th, and then, you know, I'll work at trying to get everybody here.
So, that'd be a special meeting for the, meeting with the tribe.
Yeah.
With our Sherwood Creek and the well.
Right.
Okay. Is there any more to say?
Pardon?
Six o'clock Monday.
Yeah.
Is there any additional? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, is that coming Monday?
Uh, this, March 16th, which would be...
Third Monday.
Third Monday.
So, that gives enough time to have everybody there?
Should be, yep. If, with the Shelton Journal blesses us with the public media.
I might suggest, I know the county is doing some negotiation with the Squaxon Tribe right now in Johns Creek, so I want to reach out to the county, see what they're taking us on.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the water system issues? Item B, discussion of date change of the July 2020 regular meeting. My suggestion is, is that we move it to the next Monday, the 13th, not only to accommodate the executive director, but accommodate the rest of the area, because that one, meeting on the 6th is probably going to be problematic for a bunch of us.
I'm not sure if we really have time to get people properly.
When do you come back, Larry?
That's Saturday.
Okay.
The 11th?
Yeah.
Pardon?
He was asking when I was going to come back. I haven't scheduled to go. Dee and Bryce are going, but I'd like to go.
Well, 13th is fine, because we, just vouchers were... Well, 13th is fine because we, just vouchers were my, my concern.
It'll be tough for me. That's, that's meeting day for me.
What about the 8th, Wednesday?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I could call in. I mean, I don't have any heartburn when I do that. But if I was gonna do that, I might hope people at the 6th.
Yeah. Of course, the 6th is open because that's the day I plan on being here. And we have the, um, the commissioner seminar that 20th. What's wrong with having him call in? I mean, is there, is there a really, really good reason to have not? I'd, I'd assume to keep it on a regular meeting date.
On the 6th?
Yeah.
Just miss my smile face, that's it.
Maybe we could get you up on the TV.
I don't think you're gonna want that.
All right, so we'll just keep the meeting on the 6th with the executive director just calling in. All right. Uh, item C, appointment of Judy Scott as the port representative to PRPTO.
I saw the letter. Is that all we need?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
So probably we should have an alternate, just in case. Uh, can we talk about that?
I thought we did. I think Ted was it.
Yeah. We should probably mention it too.
So I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Commissioner Scott as, uh, representative of PRPTO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, an alternate?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we have Commissioner Jackson as our alternate for PRPTO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I will change the letter to, make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, public comment? If there's any public comment?
Thank you, commissioners. Um, I just thought you might, after hearing the discussion about a new well, that might be something to, if you're gonna be seeking grants or probably should consider putting that on a comprehensive scheme as soon as possible. What I wanted to, a couple of things I wanted to talk about, um, mainly around Sweetwater Park. At the, the last meeting, Mr. Peterson insinuated that I was opposed to the Sweetwater Park, and that my testimony was false. I just wanted to give you a packet of, just a few pages of things that I pulled out of my file.
Thank you.
And I'll briefly just summarize it. I don't really wanna get into it that much. And if any of you have any questions, please give me a call and I'm happy to discuss it with you. But that, um, the first thing on top there was a letter that, or an email that Mr. Peterson sent to quite a few folks, and two of you commissioners. And that letter was sent out in 2015, late October. But the school board or the superintendent didn't know anything about it. They were unaware that this was going on until an article came out in the Kitsap Sun in December. Um, the second, or the third page is the original 1997 grant for that property. It was for five acres, not five acres plus one acre. It was for the five acres. The original project included funding for a survey. So somewhere, there's a survey that's already been done for that property that was part of the grant. So I don't think you need to spend any more money on a survey. It should be. I mean, that was part of their grant that they got was for a survey and for fencing. And there is fence on one side of the four sides up against the school. And I don't think it should be the part of the port to clean up that extra acre. I don't even think that you really need to get that extra acre the project go ahead without it. But the, the idea behind that grant was development of a trail from the elementary school chum fish hatchery that they have there through the property to the original site of the salmon center, which was across the street. And that no longer is planned to be there. It's moved. So it says that it may include a fish ladder and it may include recreation of the water wheel to produce electricity. That was never the water wheel's original purpose. It was decorative only. There was never, um, electricity produced from it. And, um, you discussed the water rights earlier about it being red herring. Once those water rights are lost, um, they're very hard to get back. And the original water rights were for drinking water and it was a fish pond there. Mr. Barber had a huge fish pond. The water rights weren't for the water wheel. It was for the fish pond and for drinking water. And if those rights have been abandoned, if you do try to recreate the water wheel, you'd have to reapply the water rights. And it, it's not an easy thing to do. We have water rights on our place and it's something that you have to maintain or you lose it. One thing that recently came to light in a discussion with the school superintendent is that they wanna move Belfair Elementary School. And the reason being, it's a landslide hazard area directly above it and it's directly above that Schindler's property, the Sweetwater Park property. So it's not a real good place to put a park. They're trying, she's trying to get a permit with fees on her, a grant with fees to move that elementary school to a different location. And that just recently came out. And, uh, oh, the, the fourth page is right out of the subarea plan. And you can see that there was no park planned in that area. All the parks that were planned were up on the plateau on the east side of railroad tracks. The trail that was to the ridge top there, um, that was conceptual only. So I just wanted to clarify a little bit of the comments he made last week or a week ago. If you get a chance and wanna call me about any of this stuff, I'm happy to talk to you about it. And the date on that public hearing will be April 6th? Is that what?
Correct. Uh, April 6th. Hopefully we get the, all the notice, but April 6th will be discussed in the conference.
And that'll be the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Earl.
Hi.
Bill commissioners and staff, Earl Eddings here on behalf of the Hook Canal Gravel Mine and Opposition Association. Uh, don't know if the commissioners are aware that Mason County had recently revoked the Grump Ventures gravel mine SM6 exemption status form, claiming that there was inconsistencies with that approval process to begin with. We won't go into all of those. But the largest and most important outcome was that, uh, they are no longer considered an existing conditional use through the current zoning, which showed that there was an abandonment from their 1960s activity there to today's 2020 proposed 66 acre gravel pit, 100-year permit, 100 truck and trailer loads a day, seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with no environmental reviews if this SM6 form kept its process. So I'm here to ask that the Port of Allen commissioners also support, uh, the Mason County Community Development's decision to recently revoke that determination of existing use as being forfeited or expired. It wasn't continual use every year for the last 60 years like some people may have thought. It's not to, uh, prevent the applicant from doing the right process, which would be a rezone, a new SEPA, public comment, public hearings on this, and ultimately probably an environmental impact statement would be warranted to see what the potential risks are to not just Hook Canal, but to the community itself. One of the biggest things that we are also asking the commission to do is to continue to support Mason County's decision, but also to identify, uh, the Port of Allen has a well 50 feet from this proposed site. And under the current designation, the current mappings and everything that were there, your well, the public's well would and probably, could and would be really jeopardized, along with all of the other homes that have shallow wells throughout that area, plus also Stimson Creek, which is a critical salmon spawning stream. So I'm asking, uh, we're hoping to get a determination from Port of Allen to support the decision that Mason County did moving forward to make sure of the due process, proper review, environmental impacts statement if it ever comes down to guarantee those successes are in place if the applicant decides to go for a rezone. The last thing I was also recalling or hoping to get an idea on was, uh, any update on lowering the speed limit through that section of Port of Allen property on motion. I know that a year ago we had discussed trying to get that lowered to 25 or 20. To who has it at 20? The Sunset Grocery down the road or Old Sandy's Marina down there, it's 20 miles an hour. Uh, there's no reason why we can't have it 20 miles an hour from the Port of Allen mooring dock before that to beyond the Port of Allen launching dock. You've got two sweeping S-curves on each location. And even if it's at 20 miles an hour, they'll still go 40. Right now it's 35. They're doing 70, so. Thank you very much, commissioners. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Comment on the speed limit thing? I had met with county last year, like Earl was talking about, and they agreed to lower it to 25 for part of the year. Now, Don talked to somebody there, I don't know, a week or two ago, and they said, uh, they didn't know anything about it and that, uh, if they lower it, it'll stay lower all year. So I don't know. So I'm gonna have to call down there and talk to them because, you know, he had made it a point to come out here and walk it with me about where he wanted to do it, you know, where we thought it needed to be. And, and I think it needs to be lowered because, you know, the site distance coming around that corner is not good for somebody coming across that road like to our second parking lot. So, so I'll get on that.
Yeah, we could, uh, we could just ask the commissioners to talk to Public Works about lowering it. I mean, if they wanna do it, it causes enough nightmares over at, uh, Tawana State Park when they lower it during the summer months. Enough people complain that all year round it's 40 miles an hour and you're dropping it down to 20, uh, during the, uh, when that park is, when the state park is used. But I agree with you 100% that we need to do something to lower that.
Yeah, no, I met with things named Dave Smith from the county and actually I've been out there twice with him.
Well, maybe you just take a letter or just go in front of the commissioners and say, "We want this lower to public safety."
Yeah, I can do that.
Try and match what To Huya, to rest of the motion would ask for those areas, which is 20 miles an hour. Is that extra time? Anything would help through that area. It is, somebody's gonna get seriously hurt there.
Yep.
Thank you.
And regarding the gravel mine, I've only seen one permit. And I haven't seen them all, so I'd like to get us, all the commissioners, get all the permits. I haven't even seen the document where the county revoked, uh, the permit. So, uh, I'd like to see if those, if any of that stuff was done regarding our well. And so I think that the port commissioner and all is gonna be educated on that. Yes, I was hoping you'd raise your hand.
Great.
Yes.
I'm Bonnie, right? Um, goodness, all of our state contracts are signed. We've got the money sitting there waiting for us and we're meeting tomorrow. I have to sign the contractor contract and get things going and we're- He expects to start working about a week and a half and figures about two months for to complete this part of it. So I'm pretty excited, so.
Can you remind us what this part is?
It's complete stabilization. They will be, um, kind of stabilizing the building first, lifting it and then removing the bottom four feet, totally replacing everything down there. Uh, that's the 12 by 12 beams and the 4 by 12 planks for the flooring and then plywood over that, plus building up the walls all the way around, you know, the sill plates and just everything from four feet up. It's gonna be replaced. Cause you've seen the pictures of it being in the water during some high times and it's just rotten. And then after that, excuse me, later on down, it'll be putting the concrete and stuff back over the top of it. But we will only be putting a very thin layer because we're gonna build it up with plywood and stuff so that we don't have to put the four inches back. But it'll look the same. It just won't be as heavy. And then he's also removing and replacing some, a lot of the inside timbers that are rotten, that need to be replaced. So there'll be full stabilization and he came in with the wonder will be way in with what the others were. Nickel Brothers Moving is ready to go, so they, they're coordinating times right now, so we're excited. And as soon as I can, I'm gonna get a, a new sign out there that says, "Under construction." So we're happy about that.
Bonnie, can you talk about the MOU that's gonna be signed tomorrow by the commissioners? Mason County Commissioners regarding the, uh, Totten Oyster House?
They, they are the last ones to sign on that. That has already been approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's been signed off. The reason they went ahead with that was because they couldn't, they couldn't technically sign it until the next commission meeting, but they've already agreed and writing to it. And so all of the other actual signers on the contract have already signed. And I've got the, I've got the signed copy from the Army Corps of Engineers and the state has already seen it and perfected it.
Great. And that's gonna transfer, or the mitigation is 40,000 to the North Bay Historical Society?
Yes, and it's not gonna come until the very, probably mid, mid-year next year. The way it goes is their, their permit to remove their building and everything and replace it with a new one is based on when they can get the Army Corps of Engineers permit. Before they can destroy anything, they have to give us that money. So barring being put off for two more years or something, we will get the money, so it will be a matter of having to fill in the spots. But we don't necessarily have to fill in, fix everything by July next year.
And one other thing when I was reading-
We just have to use the statement by then.
Right. Is that any historical items that, uh, they have at that Oyster House at Totten, uh, would come to the North Bay Historical Society?
Yes, we're working on, they, they were going to require like $5,000 over the historic thing, but that's too hard. By the time they got everything evaluated and everything, it would be really difficult to do it. So I'm gonna sit down with Tim, who's the director down there, and, uh, we will go through, and some of the stuff will come, come to us permanently. Some of the, um, effective things. They, that shellfish house processing building was built about the same time as the Oyster, the Sargeant Oyster building. And it's historic in nature. That's why they are having to do the mitigation. Uh, they have certain things they're gonna keep there and then we would get on, on a rotating basis for display. But this is part of the whole Oyster history of, uh, case in that in South Beach, so. They've been a huge player for many, many, many years, long ago that, who knows what.
Well, this is probably my, I think it's a great, great plus for North Bay Historical Society. And I think it's amazing. Shout them out, so.
It, it's what completed our final actual cash requirement for our grant. And that locked it in and when we got the Army Corps, that's what's been delaying us so long. But I've said that to the state. They've approved it. They've signed the contract, so we're good to go now. And it, as far as I know, when we were at the state- And as far as I know, when we were at the state last time in the committee that we were trying to make money from, they said this is the only known oyster museum they know of that focuses on the history of the oysters, in particular, in Puget Sound. And this building was the last known one of its kind without being altered by the Army. At least Puget Sound, we probably know West Coast. There's a lot of really exciting things, and that would be one of the rotating exhibits. And then they've got some materials, some processing equipment for the Army Corps. So I'm going to be sitting down with Tim and going through all of that stuff. He's got some amazing stuff down there. So we're pretty excited about it.
Well, great, congratulations. I mean, it's, I'd like the whole community to know that things are moving along.
Oh, they are moving very quickly. They're going to be moving the fence, extend the fence around over to the port, like we talked about before, so that they can start putting the lumber in. Then they're going to be ordering that in probably in about, excuse me, about a week, they'll have all of the big lumber, the big stuff ordered, because it takes a lot to get. And they'll start cleanup and getting ready to have the lumber here in about a week and a half. Yes, we will be taking pictures, and it'll be fun to have some of you guys out there. Yay, 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 this whole thing is going to happen.
That reminds me, you asked me about the port maybe paying for the fencing.
We talked about, I hadn't talked about it, but apparently you guys have talked about it.
Well, I haven't talked about it, I keep forgetting to ask them, but we did pay for the fencing out there, so maybe that's something we can talk about next.
I think they need 50 feet of it, so we're just, probably just going to go ahead and do it, because he's going to get it next week.
Okay.
So we'll probably just have to pay for it. I think he needs another 50 feet or something like that, so we'll have to put in those. Because he's definitely wanting to get going. So he's got a crew lined up, they, I met with the Nickel Brothers and their supervisor, that's going to be supervising the job, he'll be, it's like, something in here is making me nervous or something. And then I heard the other day of the Nickel Brothers, and they're all excited, very excited. So there you go.
That's great news, thank you.
Well, thank you for asking for the admission.
Oh, I appreciate it.
There's so many things floating around in there.
When I read that MOU, I was like, wow, this is a great deal for us.
It really is. And we were just a beneficiary, because there wasn't really any place for them to do mitigation. They don't have a museum, and they didn't want to build any museum. So they're going to do about $40,000 worth of documentation of the building itself, and do a history thing and do some public, public events, showing them the old stuff and the new stuff. So, and I want to thank Mason County and the Historic Commission, this guy's done it, because they helped us with this, and they were part of these that suggested us. The state said, hey, we need to do it someplace, they need some money, and it just happened because they made it up to $40,000.
That's great.
Yeah, we're excited. And I am going to let Bonnie see it go. Yay!
Thanks for your work, Bonnie.
We... Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Anything for the good of the order?
Judy's a Citizen of the Year.
Yes, congratulations again.
Yay!
So we're going to have a special meeting on the 16th to discuss the water, the wells, and then our next meeting is April 6th to go over the comprehensive scheme.
I think that'd be common, but I did have a thought. You have a well up there that Jeff Perry has, it's probably a six inch, but I don't know why you can't go right down through it with the right kind of device and expand it to whatever you need for the pump, 80 inch. And Salvey's that six inch is there, rather than starting over from the top of the ground. You know, I don't know who your engineer is, and I don't know if I asked anything about it, so I have to get with that.
I think, I think what he's talking about, the well is deep, but it's not very deep, because he did not have a lot of water rights. He could only draw what he was capable of doing. But yeah, you have to go down, you're going to have to go down about 200 feet to get the aquifer. And I think the well out here now is at 180, because it fills in the sand over the decades and decades that it's been there. But that would make the most sense, is to make, take his well and make it bigger. Because I think you could do that, and you've got, actually, you've got the right two well sites.
And that was one suggestion I did, but I just don't know if that's possible or not.
Aren't you aware of her?
No.
Oh.
In another...
Tom Davis's.
Neither am I.
It was very complicated, it was a huge project. I mean, it took years and years to get that thing done. Judy knows, because she was here. She wasn't involved in the technical side, but she knows that it was a huge, huge battle.
No, I just...
We should, we should know more about what our options are, and, you know, everything else to do with the 16th. So, but I just wanted you to be aware of it. I'm one of those people that believes you want to get bad news sooner rather than later, because it keeps your, gives you more options.
Thank you. Thank you, Earl.
Anything else?
Do a jury.
Second.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thanks again. Appreciate it. See you, Earl.